Good evening. I'd like to call to order the East Hempfield Township Board of Supervisor meeting. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply, and the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and your address, and your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, we ask that you unmute your microphone, and after speaking, we ask that you please mute your microphone. East Hempfield Township Public Comment Rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes. It must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. All comments should be directed towards the board. We will now move on to our first agenda item, and I would ask that you please rise. Join me for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business, because we have some visitors here this evening. So I will recognize Lancaster County Public Library is going to give us a presentation of services. And take it away. Please.
You can take the microphone off if you want to. Makes it easy.
Either one or both will work.
Very much. My name is Lissa Holland, and I am the Executive Director of Lancaster Public Library. As you probably know, our new chapter began in June. On June 1st, we opened the doors to our very brand-new building at Yule Plaza on Queen Street in the city of Lancaster. We continue to also have our Mountville branch, which is a branch that many of your residents use. They can go back and forth to either of our libraries. We had our soft opening on June 1st and then made it official on June 27th, when we had the ribbon cutting of our new building. We begin each and every board meeting with our mission and our vision statements. Our mission statement reads, "The Lancaster Public Library inspires, empowers, and strengthens our community by connecting people with information, ideas, and enriching experiences. By providing equitable access to vital educational resources, exceptional programming, and community-building opportunities, the Lancaster Public Library is recognized as a dynamic center of knowledge and cornerstone of a thriving Lancaster community." Not only do we read these statements before every board meeting, we also, as a staff, look at them and study them when we are deciding about new programming and any new visions that we have for the library. We want to make sure that they do meet our mission and vision statements. Twenty-five percent of East Hempfield residents have a library card. Last year, this group of patrons borrowed 120,055 pieces of material. That is valued at the low range of $2.4 million that they received free of charge to them. That's everything from printed materials to cake pans, to downloadable and our databases. In our new location downtown, we've added some services. For the first time, our building is fully ADA accessible. We have comfortable seating areas, and when I say comfortable, they really are. We have couches and chairs, and we have them throughout the library, and we suit them to the size of patrons. So our children's room has much smaller furniture than our adult areas. We have a large open reading section that we... It warms the cockles of my heart when I look at it, because I envisioned it with all ages being able to gather in one place and read and study and work together, and that is exactly what is happening. We have ample parking, being that we are an anchor of the new Christian Street parking garage. For the first time, we have a dedicated young adult library, where teens and tweens can be themselves, they can relax, they have furniture on which they can lounge, they can be with their peers in their own space. We have 21st century technology, including lockers for contact-free pickup 24/7. We have an outdoor terrace that overlooks Yule Plaza, and we have a variety of sizes of meeting rooms for community and other nonprofit organizations to use. Some of our rooms can fit upwards of 250 to 300 people. As I may mention earlier, we at the public library across the board have much more than books. For Lancaster Public Library, we have a new business and reference center. We used to have the Duke Street Business Center. Obviously, we're no longer on Duke Street, but we combined that with our reference center. It's an all-glass room where people can go and do reference work or business work, and we have reference librarians manning it throughout each day. We have expanded our autism resource center, so now it's a sensory and autism resource center. It's one of the first in the country and is still one of the only ones in Lancaster County. We have the historical Lancaster collection. We share it often with Lancaster history. They have some of the materials that we don't have, and we have materials that they don't have, so we interloan one another. We have e-sources, including audiobooks, ebooks, and streaming services. We added Canopy along with Hoopla, so your residents can download and stream movies, music, books, and as well as comic books. We have both youth and adult programming, and as I said before, we have cake pans, and that's truly true. We have American Girl Dolls, tabletop and outdoor games, museum passes, and musical instruments. And in fact, the Mountville branch has a gorgeous tabletop harp that was carved here in Lancaster County. Both of our branches combined have seen increases since we have opened in June. Lancaster Public Library's new Yule Plaza location issued 1,660 new library cards and welcomed over 38,020 visitors just in June and July. Each year, we meet the state standards of spending at least 12% of our budget on new materials. This year, that is well over $200,000 of materials that we will have bought by the end of the year. Another point for Lancaster Public Library that is, I think, a good point for us is that we have more trained librarians, men and women who have gone to school to get their masters in library science than any other library here in the county. And last year alone, we answered over 2,000 reference questions. So the library is still well and alive and a thriving place to be. Of our $1.6 million operating budget, we continue to raise at least 64% of our annual budget. This comes from donations, book sales, fines. That is more than most libraries across the country have to raise. We have given you this information in the past, but it's gotten even greater divide between the two. The national funding, national funding per capita is almost $39. That's up from a little over $36. Ours was raised by pennies. We are still under $1.50 per capita. So we just keep saying, imagine what we could do if we had a sustainable revenue flow each year that we knew was coming into Lancaster Public Library. We continue to be eighth in the largest service area, 18th in the largest catalog of materials, and our materials are the largest and most in-depth collection within the county, and our materials travel from library to library, because often, we are the only library that has something that somebody at another library wants. But compare that to 450 libraries in Pennsylvania, public libraries, and we are ranked 439th, and that's just Lancaster Public Library. So that's the downtown location and the Mountville location. We are ranked 439th in local funding per capita. So that is why I am here tonight, to say thank you for the support you have continued to give us year after year, and to ask you to continue that support. I am here with several of my fellow board trustees and with Eva, who is our secretary, who is going to ask you what we would like.
Thank you, Lissa. My name is Eva Dombrowski. As Lissa just said, I am the Secretary for the Board for the Lancaster Public Library. And as we've just illustrated, you know why we're here, right? Ordinarily, in this meeting, we ask for your renewed commitment and your renewed support of our cause, and acknowledgement of the value that we bring to East Hempfield. And ordinarily, we would ask for the $5 that's recommended per capita by the state, but that's like a huge jump for you guys. So that's a pretty unrealistic ask. In looking at the numbers this year and looking at our budget and trying to make sure that we can continue to make strides for the betterment of your constituency, as well as the rest of the county, even if you pledged the state recommended $5 to the only 25% of East Hempfielders that are LPL card members, that would still be $33,000, which is a pretty big jump from what you guys gave us last year. So my humble request is that if you meet us partway with $4 per cardholder, that would get us to $26,708 for an annual contribution to the Lancaster Public Library this year. We know that you know how valuable a thriving library is to a strong and connected and resourceful community, and we're honored that East Hempfield is such a place of opportunity and possibility for so many, and we can't wait to continue serving you. We hope that with your support, we can do it. Thank you, guys, for having us.
Thank you.
Have any questions for us?
I do not. I'm going to turn it over to my other board members. I do thank you for the service that you provide for us, and we do appreciate you taking the time and coming forward and explaining what it is that you do, because not everybody might not be familiar with that, and, you know, and your need, obviously, as well. So we do thank you for that. Mr. LaFever, did you have anything?
I do have a question. Ironically, today, the news states that the state is looking at mandating control of its resources to public libraries who ban any kind of book. Have you thought about how you will deal with that direction if it comes to be?
These are hard times. However, I stand behind the op-ed piece that I wrote with our president, Aaron Sherman, at the beginning of the year, that appeared in Lancaster LNP, Freedom to Read. That is what public libraries are based on. We have, that is why we go to school, to earn our masters of library science. It is a science on how to make sure that we have a collection that is equally built for various viewpoints, and we do not force anybody to read anything that they do not want. So that's the base and the passion of the libraries. And I will tell you that my staff would not take it well if we began reading, just to weed, because somebody doesn't agree with it. You don't have to agree with it. You don't have to like everything that we have, but you can use what is needed for you and let somebody else use what is needed for them. We stand behind the fact that we are one of the only organizations that provides services from birth to death, and that we invite everyone and anyone into the library. It does not depend on ethnic, religious, gender decisions. Everyone is welcomed. That respect, we have to provide materials for everyone.
Thank you. This board has a budget meeting in five weeks for next year. I, for one, think we definitely should consider the value of Lancaster Free Public Library.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Bennett?
I like your comments concerning the question that Mr. LaFever raised. I think it's a good position to be in. I'd like to see government at every level stay out of this, period. They can only screw it up. Okay?
I'm probably not supposed to say this, but I agree fully with you.
And with that, again, my only question from a funding standpoint is, Mrs. Switzer, what was our funding level last year?
$20,000.
$20,000? Okay.
We've held that for maybe two years?
If my numbers are correct, which I did confirm with our CFO before this meeting, it was $20,000 for the past two years, and before that, it was actually $19,000. So you did increase two years ago.
Well, you did a nice job twisting our arm here today, so we'll see what we can do for you, okay?
Thank you very much.
We appreciate the fact that you're one of our only municipalities in our service area that continues to increase their gift to us. So thank you very much for that, and thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Weaver, any?
I just, I think you folks do a great job, and I would not be opposed to an increase of some sort, once we start to look at the numbers.
Thank you.
Ms. Russell?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next on our agenda, we have the Consent Agenda, which are made up of routine items that require very little discussion or debate. One of those items is the Approval of Minutes, which I did not attend the September meeting. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items A, B, C, and E.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed motion carries five to zero. Consent Agenda Item D, Approval of the Minutes, is there a motion to approve Item D? Okay. Motion for Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, up next, action items, the Little Conestoga Blue-Green Corridor floodplain restoration, stormwater management plan. Misses... Okay.
Mr. Good.
Mr. Good.
Good evening, gentlemen. Brent Good with ELA Group, representing the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation for the Blue-Green Corridor. In this particular plan, it's the, what we call the Mennonite Home Stream Restoration Plan. It's in the location adjoining Harrisburg Pike, paralleling Good Drive. We're also currently, just for your background, working on a plan for the Phase 1 of the trail in this particular location, but this particular plan has been segregated from that. But this, this plan, this portion is on the Mennonite home lands on their property. It's just over five acres. We're under agreement with the home. They're fully supportive of the project, along with many others. This, this project in whole is about 3.3 miles of trail. If you recall, through this board, we, we gained the same waiver for the Barcrest Apartments Project, the stream restoration at Marietta Avenue that was approved and then completed last year into the beginning of this year, and that turned out to be rather successful. That project has been completed for the stream restoration, the first phase of the project. Disturbance in this area is going to be about two acres or a little more. There is no formal improvements from an infrastructure standpoint. This is a floodplain stream restoration. It's a permitted use in the floodplain in your, in your Greenway overlay zone and the 100-year floodplain. The site itself is in the campus zone, and we are here tonight, of course, to, to gain a waiver from you of Section 260-14A2A. Basically, this, this waiver is needed because, as the ordinance is written, it requires that the land cover be considered meadow in a predeveloped condition and lawn in a post-development condition. This results in a higher calculated runoff, regardless of whether or not the conditions actually change from pre to post-development. This results in the need for stormwater management, an additional, for the additional runoff in that calculation. In this case, the land cover will not change, and the intent of the disturbance is to reduce flooding potential and improve water quality. Additionally, since the disturbance is within the floodplain area, there is no way to effectively implement the additional stormwater measures beyond the floodplain improvements already being proposed. Granting the waiver, in essence, acknowledging that the intent of the disturbance is to improve stormwater management, whereas the ordinance is intended to ensure that the new land development type projects include stormwater management improvements to manage the runoff associated with that particular type of project. So we're taking a meadow condition to a floodplain meadow condition with this restoration, removing legacy sediment, opening up the floodplain, reducing the flood elevation. In this map, as you see, the stream is actually the municipal boundary. North is to the top of the sheet. To the right or east side is Mannheim Township. We have a plan into them at this time, awaiting comment from them. But the project, then, once we gain approval from both municipalities, we're looking towards this next spring, summer, to do this improvement. So we're, as I understand, we're just seeking the waiver that we don't, the actual approval of the plan, I believe, is from the staff, is my understanding. Any other questions? I'd be glad to answer.
What's the section that you're asking the waiver for again?
Is Section 260-14A2A.
Is this just for the modification, or is it for the whole plan?
My understanding is that all we need is a modification, but if my understanding is wrong, I would then ask the board for a conditional approval based on the letter we received from David Miller dated August 18th. Yeah.
This is Nate Sturgis. For stormwater plans, the only approval they need from the board is for the modification or waiver. Staff reviews and approves stormwater plans.
Thank you. I will say that of the, of the comments given by David Miller, I don't see any problem addressing the comments from the August 18th letter.
Any, any other questions from the board?
This is just a common sense thing in the stormwater work. Common sense doesn't exist. So we should approve this without even any hesitancy.
Mr. Bennett, any questions?
I don't think so. It's just...
Is there not a, a single-family residence northwest of your active area there, fronting onto Harrisburg Avenue? I don't see it on the plan.
Yeah, it's kind of covered up in that particular plan. Well, actually, there's a parking lot right there with a hand. That's actually KBG Attorney's Office. They, we actually gained an easement from them for access to this site off of Harrisburg Pike, so they've been very cooperative and in favor of the project as well, but that is not a residence, it's a business.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the audience? Any from Zoom? Okay. Hearing none, then, is there a motion to approve modification request, one subject to all staff and engineering comments? Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Hope to see you again soon.
Thank you. Up next, we have Shanks Estates LLC, 431 Richardson Drive.
Good evening. Kevin Ember from R2, also here. Right with me is Paul Brooker, who's the Shanks Extracts Director of Engineering. Give you a brief summary. If you recall, we were here last month for another plan that Shanks is processing for 350 Richardson Drive across the street. They're also currently under construction for a small parking lot expansion at their property at 351 Richardson, which went through a stormwater plan approval, so that did not go to the board. So we're here tonight to discuss 451 Richardson, which is the, their third property along that road. It's a three-acre property in enterprise zone. There's an existing building there, and what, and what they're proposing is just a 900-square-foot building addition off the back. More of the requirements that are affecting the site design, or some parking improvements, reconfiguration of parking around the site, two new loading docks, and some other pads around the building. So that was, that prompted some improvements for the stormwater. There's an existing stormwater basin on the southern side of the property, which is proposed to be expanded.
I'll switch on this side.
This area here, and then we're reconfiguring and adding a few parking spaces to this existing lot north of the building. And in this general area, there is proposed to be an underground stormwater bed that would handle stormwater infiltration. And as I mentioned, the building addition proposed is at the rear here, and there's some, a few pads...
And there's some, a few, um, pads for equipment proposed around the building associated with that. If you recall, we also had discussed, uh, previous meeting that the, the approach for parking here as discussed with staff as well, was to look at it as kind of a campus for the three Shanks properties. That was submitted to, um, the township engineer and traffic engineer with, and they did not have any comments on that approach. So one, one thing we are adding here to, um, provide better pedestrian connection is additional sidewalk along the front edge up to the property line at the northeast corner. Um, there is existing curb and sidewalk from the point south of this existing drive to the, the property corner at the, the southwest side of the property. Um, so as far as where we are at in the process, there's a, a few remaining comments from David Miller Associates, August twenty-third letter. Uh, we, we've had some conversation direct with them on, um, direction to how to approach a few of their remaining comments. We don't believe we have any issues, um, resolving those in coordination with the township engineer. There's also three, uh, modification requests associated with this plan. Um, and I can just briefly go through those and, uh, feel free to ask any questions you may have. So the, the one is related to the location of the proposed curb and sidewalk. As mentioned, it's, it's proposed right along the, the roadway here with the, the sidewalk adjacent to the proposed curb. That's similar to the existing condition here. So we're, we're basically requesting a modification to not provide that beauty strip, which is the township ordinance requirement between the, the backup curb and the sidewalk. Um, so one of the reasons for that is to just continue what's already existing on site. And with the, the existing proximity of the, the parking to the roadway, which was, uh, considered a existing non-conformity essentially of the, the, the zoning officer, um, allows us to kind of expand and make a more efficient parking lot in this area. The, the second request was just related to some of the screening requirements. So that was more specific to, um, this area here, which is visible, obviously from the public roadway, just based on the configuration of the lot. But due to the stormwater basin being here and trying to continue to provide some level of access to these for maintenance, we had requested to not screen these elements. Um, and think, just based on the character of the surrounding properties, that it, it wouldn't be, um, an issue for any of the, the neighboring properties to see that. And obviously, across the street is also owned by Shanks at, at three fifty-one here. Um, the, the third request was also related to planting, but as it related to, uh, trees in the parking lot, required islands. As mentioned, there's an underground stormwater, um, facility considered here. There's also, hard to see here, but these, uh, lines on the plan represent existing, there's existing, uh, LASSA sanitary sewer easement and an existing gas easement of fifty feet, which, uh, cuts across this corner of property, which makes, um, planting trees in certain islands difficult. So we're providing an equivalent number of trees just elsewhere within the property. Um, just not in the specific islands where there was a conflict with stormwater. So those were the three modification requests. So we're here tonight to request, um, approval of those and along with approval of the final plan conditional to addressing any outstanding comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. LaFever, we'll start with you. Any comments or questions?
None, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bennett.
As I read, read the plan, you are going to increase the parking? Or you're going to make some pretty substantial changes to the, to the parking? And I'm wondering what impact that'll have on your impervious surface and stormwater management?
Yeah, so the, the increase in number of spaces is actually somewhat minimal. We're increasing from thirty-five to forty spaces. Um, we're, though we're losing a few spaces, uh, that exist here with this new loading dock configuration. Um, so yeah, as, as mentioned with the stormwater, that's mainly being handled with, as far as the increase in impervious coverage with a, an underground, um, infiltration bed in this area, north of the building, which would be under the parking lot. And then an expansion of, uh, I don't know if you can go to the next, next van, but there's an expansion of the, stormwater basin at the south end to create more volume there. Or this, this is basically extending those contours up to allow for a larger surface area, uh, for that stormwater.
Okay, looks like it's addressed properly, so you're in good shape, thank you.
Mr. Weaver?
I have nothing.
Mr. Russell?
No comments.
So the only question I have is the neighbor to your s- north or south, rather, where the screening would go. Correct, have, have you guys talked to them at all?
Well, that, that is actually also owned by Shanks, that's the three fifty-one address.
Perfect, that's all.
So I don't think they'll have any issue.
Yep, sounds good. Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay. All right, so it's always good when a business is expanding, so that's good news, great, we wish you the best. With that, is there a motion, uh, to approve modification request number two and conditionally approve modification request one and three, subject to staff and engineering comments? Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to recommend approval of the final plan, land development plan for four fifty-one Richardson Drive Township? File twenty-three dash oh six dot oh two, subject to all staff and engineering comments. Motion for Mr. LaFever, is there a second? Second for Mr. Weaver, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, thank you. Up next, we have the mini, minimum municipal obligation MMO.
We actually have, uh, the Hemphill School District's.
Oh, I'm sorry, can't forget that. All right, sorry, Hemphill Home, uh, or School District Homecoming Parade, October seventh.
Yes, so for the past several years, the Hemphill High School Marching Band has done a mini marchathon in the neighborhood to the north and west of the high school. And student council, um, along with the band and the administration have, um, come together and are really excited to be able to do a first homecoming parade for the first time in many years, actually as far back in history as they can find. Um, it's, it's been twenty plus years since there's been a homecoming parade. Um, so they have submitted a request with all the appropriate documentation, um, and the support of staff to do a homecoming parade on the same route that was done by the marchathon in Landisville on October seventh at ten AM. Um, traffic control will be provided by fire police and school district personnel as it has been in the, in the past. And, um, our emergency services have been asked to participate in the parade as well as sports teams and the graduating class of twenty twenty-four. So it would be staff's recommendation that the board approve Hemphill High School Student Council's application to utilize and provide traffic control on the roadways listed for their homecoming parade in Landisville on October seventh, twenty twenty-three. And to, uh, permit the chairman to sign the roadway indemnification form for those same roadways.
Any comments or questions from the board? Audience? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the Hemphill High School Student Council's application to utilize and provide traffic control on the roadway specified in the application for their homecoming parade in Landisville on October seventh, twenty twenty-three, ten AM? And authorize the chairman to sign the roadway indemnification form for the roadway specified in the application. Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, thank you. That would be October seventh, which I believe is.
It's a Saturday, Mr. Room.
Up next, the MMO municipal, minimum municipal obligation.
So the MMO is something we have to do each year to certify to the state how much we owe our pension plans. And you see those numbers there, uh, it's indicated by Gina Johnson, our treasurer, that it's gone up about four percent. So the cost to the township after state aid is deducted is three hundred and seventy-six thousand and thirty-two dollars.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board, Mr. LaFever? Mr. Bennett?
And the three seventy-six is a four percent increase over last year?
Over last year.
Okay.
Over last year's funding level.
Right, and it's, and it's required.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Weaver?
Nope.
Mr. Russell?
Not this time.
Any questions, comments from the audience on this? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three MMO as presented, which is establishes funding requirements for the township pension funds?
So move.
Motion for Mr. Russell is there second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries five to zero, thank you. Up next, uh, little bit of sadness, uh, Recreation Authority, uh, except the resignation of Michael O'Brien um, from the Recreation Authority effective immediately. Mike is going to, been a, a great partner, uh, to the township. A lot of the amenities that we have, um, he's played a part in. And he's just, uh, been a good citizen, um, when he lived here, uh, and done a lot of good for our township. So he will be missed. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say that, um, Mike did a great job for the township, for the residents of the community. Uh, in his work on the Recreation Authority, he was really a driving force behind, uh, the, the blue collar project that, uh, has been so, so successful in, in putting our golf course and recreation area there in, in the black. Um, uh, he, uh, he will be missed and, uh, just greatly appreciate all the work that, that he's done, uh, for us.
Any, Mr. Weaver?
Great asset to the community, I believe. Really nice guy.
Well said.
One of his, uh, lasting legacies too is going to be his two massive floodplain restoration projects. Uh, that he did for Lime Springs and for Penn State Medical, which saved the township probably three, four million dollars worth of taxpayer funds uh, to meet our stormwater obligations, our clean water, MS four stormwater obligations. Um, he put in Noel Road, Embassy Road, built the roundabout. Uh, he brought Penn State Medical into our community. Um, he did help, it was a key person, as Mr. Penn talked about, with turning our golf course around financially. All these things have helped, helped the taxpayers, uh, to the tune of that we have been able to put millions of dollars into our capital reserve for projects. Uh, because of work that he's directly brought in other monies into our township. Uh, so he is going to be greatly missed because a lot of our things that we've seen over the last ten years, he's had a direct hand now. And he's been very positive influence in this township.
Mr. Chairman, I would be remiss if I passed this moment without acknowledging another benefit from Mr. O'Brien, some benevolence from him for, uh, the Roarstown Firehouse improvements to the tune of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that he assembled with some of his vendors in the Lime Spring area, to my understanding. I'd been asked by staff to help remind him of commitment he made on this and, uh, over a couple uh, opportunities, I, I did do that. And, uh, Mike has always been a gracious gentleman about dealings and, uh, I was really pleased when he reported to me, as it were, that he had done this. And I know it's a great asset for the, the firehouse and the live-ins particularly.
He will be missed.
Just, just want to, uh, perhaps at some point, we could put together a proclamation honoring Mike or commending him.
Absolutely.
We could work on, maybe if we could work on that, I'd, I think that would be appropriate.
And, and just to be clear, he's not retiring? He's just residing from the Recreation Authority. He's still very much involved in Oak Tree. But yes, we would, we can do that certainly.
All right, with that, is there a motion to accept the resignation of Michael O'Brien with regrets from the Recreation Authority effective immediately? Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, thank you. Is there anything on our old business that anybody would like to bring up? Anything on our new business? Hearing none, traffic report, we had a traffic report this evening, uh, we discussed, uh, among some other things, uh, the issue at, uh, Roarstown. We also discussed, uh, a speeding issue that we do have on, um, South Colebrook Road. Um, there was also a resident, um, that came and spoke about her concerns for speeding on Greystone Road. So we're looking to address those issues. In addition, um, we, uh, did discuss again the issue of the accidents, uh, in Roarstown and some of the, um, steps that we possibly may take in the future or recommend, uh, be done there, um, to see if we can help with that issue. And we also discussed the, uh, truck study, um, which we will be presenting at the October eighteenth meeting um, with our traffic engineer. With that, uh, it's time for public comment. Is there anybody here that has a comment or a question they'd like to raise? Okay, is there anyone online or on Zoom that has anything? Okay. Managers' report.
I'm going to turn it over to Diane for the Centerville Report. She's more in tune with the, uh, weekly, bi-weekly meetings.
Um, so we have monthly PCM meetings for the Centerville South project. We actually had one this morning. Um, and it was primarily better news than it has been in the past. Um, the utilities are, um, more quickly but still slowly taking care of their lines on poles and getting things moved around and, and worked through. Um, I am sure that you could guess that Verizon is still the holdup for, uh, poll work throughout the, the process. And sadly, they also are lacking in design work as well. So they will continue to, um, create delays. But even with all of the delays that we've told you about on a pretty much monthly basis for the project, um, the completion date is only pushed back two months at this point. Um, JD Ekman has been able to really work around out of phase on the project and continue to make progress, even though they've been stopped in certain work areas. Um, so the current expected completion date is September twenty-second of twenty twenty-five. So it was a very positive meeting. They have been very responsive to any concerns that have been brought up to us, either by citizens or internally. Um, and I appreciate working with the staff that are there because, much like the state road project, it's been a very positive experience.
So the, uh, Old Roarstown Road Bridge still is at a stalled position. We have utility issues and railroad protective service issues. The issue there is not Verizon, it is actually Windstream, that we thought we were going to have some movement this, yet tomorrow. But that's now been delayed another two weeks, so they're still plugging away at it. Uh, the Farmandale Project is moving along very speedily. Uh, we hope to have paving, the, the signals I believe are up at Marietta and Good. We hope to have paving around Marietta, probably starting this Monday. And they hope to have the final section, which would be the, um, orbital section. um, signal put up and then the median put up at Farmandale and Orville. And hope to have that, all that work done by the first week in October. So, good news. As we mentioned before, the truck study is going to be at our meeting on October eighteenth at the Board of Supervisors. The, uh, Stony Battery Trail, I continue to work with TE Connectivity. I believe the seven ninety-one Stony Battery problem is being resolved as we speak, if not already done. But the wires are off and there was one pole that needed to be moved. Uh, the Amos Hur Phase Two DCNR funded project. We have met with the Keystone Purchasing Network to look at possible bidding of that. I'm having a park and recreation committee meeting on the twenty-sixth to further discuss that funding scenario with them and then bring it to the board hopefully on the fourth for consideration by the board as a whole. Not much happening with stormwater projects. We're kind of, uh, in a holding pattern on most of them. Uh, I did attend a meeting of the Little Conestoga Watershed Alliance, which is doing the design work for the Jackson and River Drive project, which is a stream restoration project on the Little Conestoga. They are currently at a fifteen percent design, uh, status and they hope to submit the DEP permits by the end of the year. So that's slowly moving along. That's going to be a design project and then it's going to be turned back over to the municipality and the proprietors in, uh, Lancaster Township to seek funding sources. So that's not part of the construction, just design. And we have a budget meeting scheduled for October twenty-fourth at four thirty. And I'm asking or requesting an executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Just to point out that the Centerville project, from my perspective, is going very well. Um, the contractor has done an awesome job. It was very well designed by JMT with traffic control and it's going to pass as best as you could have with that complex of a project. So they've done a very good job.
Yeah. Any other comments for the good of the order? Okay. Hearing none, we will adjourn our meeting at seven fifty-three PM. We will head into executive session. So Mrs. Switzer just outlined, and we will not return. Thank you.